Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, ma'am.
Welcome to our meeting tonight. For the record, this is the regular meeting of the Nashville Town Council. Tonight is Tuesday, June 5, 2018, and for the record, it's 7:00 PM. The first item of business we have tonight is the approval of minutes, of which we have four sets. Thursday, April 26, Tuesday, May 1, and Wednesday, May 30, and Wednesday, again, May 30, for two separate meetings. Does the Cherokee motion to minutes be approved as written or are there corrections?
So made.
It's been moved.
And seconded.
And seconded, the minutes be corrected as written, be approved as written. Is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor indicates that we're saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Accordingly, the minutes are approved. We have four folks who want to give us some comments tonight, and I trust they're all here. The first is Clint Williams. Mr. Williams, would you come to the podium, please, and state your name and address for the record?
Good evening. Hi, my name's Clint Williams, 731 Briarwood Court. I originally came here to talk to y'all specifically about the property tax increase that was proposed last month, the twelve-and-a-half percent tax at the time. The other reason I wanted to talk was also about the public commenting. I do see under item four on here that there is a discussion item for that, and also want to comment, I called to sign up, I did not submit my request in writing, and I'm still on the agenda, so I appreciate being given this time to make my comments. Specifically regarding the property tax increase, I've seen that there's been a change to that schedule already, so my comments are limited on that. I do thank y'all for listening to comments that have been made from the comment previous, public previously. Obviously, y'all have taken that to heart, and do want to thank y'all for listening. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Katie Montgomery. Mr. Montgomery, would you come forward, please, and state your name and address for the record?
Katie Montgomery, 1111 Eastern Avenue. Mr. Mayor, Town Council, and most importantly, the citizens of Nashville, my name is Katie Montgomery. Prior to April 8 of 2017, I was your library director for the Harold D. Cooley Library. I have watched in dismay as events have unfolded in this town. I have not shared my experience openly for over a year. Frankly, I was too humiliated to show my face in this town. A little more than a year ago, Hank Raper, the town manager, came to the library and told me that I had two options, either resign or be fired. Either way, he told me, April 8 was my last day. I had received no disciplinary warnings, no verbal warnings, no written warnings, so I was completely blindsided by this event. Moreover, Mr. Raper forced me to resign just ten days short of my having completed the standard one-year probationary period. I was aware that this was the right of the town to hire and fire at will, but when I asked Mr. Raper for any reason or any explanation, he offered none. He refused to give me any idea why I had lost my job. I was forced to resign with absolutely no clue as to why Mr. Raper had taken this position from me. He instructed me to write a letter of resignation, and to clean out my office, and afterwards, Chief of Police Tom Bayshore kindly helped me out of the building. If you were to read that resignation letter, which I'm happy to provide a copy of, you will see that I carefully worded it to show that I was under duress and in shock. In fact, I made it clear that it had been my great joy to serve the town of Nashville. Because I did not want others to see me as bitter, I've remained silent about my forced resignation for over a year. In light of recent events and concerns, however, I need to share with you some information. I believe Mr. Raper had not investigated what dismissing the director would do to the library's well-being and long-term outlook. This is an example of extremely poor planning, which could have greatly damaged the library. During my employment, I had repeatedly mentioned how important it was to maintain state funding and accreditation through the North Carolina State Library. Nevertheless, Mr. Raper seemed to be under the impression that it was only worth about $3,000, the approximate amount of a yearly stipend that we've received. It was, and still is, very much more. I believe that Mr. Raper did not look before he left, and this is not an appropriate way to manage any part of your town. Immediately, the effects of my dismissal became apparent. The first axe to fall was in losing a library services technology access grant that would have been worth $12,000 to $14,000 to fund the purchase of new children's computers. These computers were educational, would be helpful for second language learners, and were child-safe. I can provide written proof that we were to have received that grant, and that it was rescinded due to the lack of a director. The library's relationship with our community partner for that grant, Downey's Partnership, was harmed. The next axe, we lost a carefully orchestrated program to be a pilot program in harmony with the school system and the accelerated reading program to allow children to complete their AR testing in the library. This program is something that patrons parenting elementary-age children constantly request. These things may have been regained since my loss, I can speak to what happened when I left. As news spread that there was no longer a library director, one of the volunteers who participated in the reading therapy dogs program left. She was a wonderful volunteer who brought her two beautiful dogs to us on a regular basis. The library also lost other volunteers, such as a young bilingual woman who was working with us through a relationship with Nash Community College in the service learning program. In addition, we lost valuable workforce development programs, as well as community-enriching educational programs like How to coupon, our weekly crochet group, Kaleidoscope Play and Learn group, which is a comprehensive early literacy program, and a program called Five Wishes in conjunction with Nash Healthcare, which provided a living will at no cost to participants. Our partnership with local TV to have our storytimes filmed and broadcast to increase childhood literacy in the community ended. You also lost your notary public. Other internships that were in progress with Barton College and UNC at Greensboro were abruptly dropped. I had brought in STEM programming involving the Museum of Natural Sciences, and they brought in educator and live animals. Sylvan Heights Bird Park visited, bringing in educator and live birds. I had arranged in June to splash off summer learning with a visit from the North Carolina Aquarium with some live animals. As you may have noticed, I worked hard to build partnerships and increase our standing in the community. I also ran and paid for, out of my own pocket, a Facebook page with advertising to extend our reach and publicity. Actually, as most librarians across the country are prone to do, I paid for a lot of things out of my own pocket for the good of the library. I soon learned that Mr. Raper, in fact, did not plan to hire a library director to replace me. This would have caused the Cooley Library to lose accreditation. Mr. Raper said that this was a budget measure, and it was reported that he intended to allow unqualified personnel to manage the library. To be clear, it is not sour grapes that are causing me to say that they were unqualified. In the state of North Carolina, a librarian must be in possession of both a master's degree in library science and be certified as a public librarian by the state library. Mr. Raper assured people in the town council that not having a librarian was not so unusual. Town council obliged. The only person that spoke out, Mrs. Louise Hinton, herself an educator, who understood the investment this community has made in its library. Ladies and gentlemen, at this point, I took action. I knew that without a library director, the library would fall into being just a building with some books, without a state accreditation. It would no longer honor the congressman for who it was named, and it would no longer retain the value that it is to this community. You may have lost much of the computer access that is publicly available now, the summer learning program, and much, much more. I called the state librarian, Cal Shepard, and begged her to advocate for this small gem of a library. I told her, I may not have a job anymore, and that's okay, but I have to fight for this library. It's still my job to advocate for libraries. I then called my mentor, Katie Roach, the director at Brazile Memorial Library, and alerted her to what was happening here. I said to her much the same, I may not have a job, but Nashville needs its library. I can't help but wonder whether it was Cal Shepard and Katie Roach's communication to Mr. Raper that kept the library as you have it today. The Nashville Graphic was also quick to pick up the story, and they fairly and objectively reported on the issues, contacting the state librarian themselves. Mr. Raper listened to what they had to say, and eventually, he decided that hiring a new director was in his best interest. I was not, at any time, offered my former position back, and although I had reapplied when the job was posted, I never even received acknowledgement of my application. I understand that you have a perfectly lovely library director at this time, Mrs. Emily Enderly, and I am so thankful that her capable hands are directing this valuable resource. You may have heard along the way that this situation has had severely adverse repercussions for me personally. At this time, over a year later, I am still unemployed because the stigma, rumors, and mystery surrounding my resignation have followed me. I am 45 years old, I have no income, no insurance, and I have had to drain all of my retirement funds just to stay alive and housed. I was denied unemployment insurance because I had technically resigned, although I never would have resigned had Mr. Raper not forced me. I very nearly lost my home this January. Some of you also know that the stress, shame, and humiliation of my situation brought me to my lowest point last August. I attempted suicide a few months after my dismissal. You know who called me in that time of crisis? Your police chief, Tom Bayshore. To this day, I'm not even sure how he knew, but he did. I'm sorry to be so maudlin, which brings up Mrs. Linda Maudlin. Folks, four people have worked with her and have quit or been fired in the last roughly 16 months. That is, to my knowledge, her entire staff, with the exception of any new replacements. I have certainly been ill-treated by her. I was denied and ridiculed for requesting reimbursements of personal expenses paid for the benefit of the library, and at one time witnessed her bringing an employee to her office and lecturing that person so loudly it could be heard in the reception area. The employee returned in tears. Take a long, hard look also at the total number of people that have quit, resigned, or been fired just since Mr. Raper has been here. That is not, in any way, normal attrition. There is likely a pattern of systematic abuse visited on employees. I beg you to please reconsider for the benefit of all that have been unjustly fired, forced out, or have quit or resigned due to the circumstances of his management, the compensation, restoration, apologies, and amends that are due to each of those people. People of Nashville, I cannot vote in your races, and I cannot be seriously involved in the goings-on of this town. You've heard me refer to the library tonight as "we," "my," and "our" because I took that much personal ownership of it, and I pass that on to you all and to Emily. I loved this library, and this job was the greatest pride of my life. I am so proud of all of you who have spoken up so far, who have had the courage to speak out, and now I join you. Thank you very much.
Our next person is James Harrell. Mr. Harrell, would you come to the podium, please, and state your name and record, address for the record?
I am James Harrell. I live at 707 Bass Drive in Nashville. I have been there ever since the street was cut in, so I'm a longtime resident of Nashville, a lifetime resident. I have a couple complaints and things I would like to board and town to address. Number one is partying. I know it's probably an ordinance, don't know what the ordinance is, but when you have parties that go on to 1:00 and 1:15 in the morning, hollering, using MFs all night long, you wouldn't want it in your neighborhood, and I sure don't want it in mine. So, I would like that addressed. I know that there was two officers come by last week and stopped at one of them and said something to them about code of love. I appreciate them doing that, but they're not the only time people that do the party. Number two, I'd like to address blockage of the street. Number one, the street is only 274 inches wide. The width of a vehicle can be 102 inches without it being classed as a wide load. That only gives five foot, 10 inches left for something to travel on. And when people park on the street, and to park a foot and a half from the curb, and then people come up and park behind it beside them, and to sit down, jabber, and talk, and carry on, I think something needs to be addressed with some signs. In the past week, somebody backed out of driveway next door to me, backed into the side of a car. And of course, it put a dent in it, but everything was all right with the two of them, it went on, they left. Yesterday, a person backed out of the same driveway, backed out, and the man had a motorcycle parked behind it. They were hollering and screaming for him to stop, and he liked to back inside, the little girl liked to back inside the motorcycle. It's obvious the street is not wide enough for vehicles to park on the side of the street, but especially behind anybody's driveway. In the past six months, I've had to pull down in my front lawn, turn around in my yard so I could get out of my own driveway and get down the street. I have boats, campers, and it's no way that when I come down the street, if somebody's parked beside the street, I can back in my own yard and put my personal property in my yard. So, I feel like the town needs to address the street by putting some signs up and stop parking on the street, especially behind driveways, and that's just going to be the whole street.
Would no parking down the whole street help?
It would definitely help. If people had to park in the driveways, but yes, it would help, because if you stop to park in beside the street, then people could back out of driveway. You cannot back out of a street that's, say, two and a half lanes wide, and back out when somebody's parked middleway to the street, and get out with any vehicle. I don't care how compact the vehicle it is without backing into something or having to back up and drive two or three times.
Okay, let us take this under consideration, and we'll see if we can do something for you.
Okay.
Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing our attention. And the fourth person, James Baker. Mr. Baker, would you come forward, please, to the podium and state your name and address for the record?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, in the city council. I live at 103 East Green Street in Nashville, formerly on Mayor Strickland's home. On May 12, well, I moved here from owning a home over in Rocky Mount for 16 years, and I served on the Rocky Mount Preservationist Board for three and a half years. I was on part of the project with the beer brewery and the Bill Village.
Will you speak into the microphone, please?
Yes, sir. And on May 12, I received in the mail a postcard which read, "My water sewer and garbage bill." I glanced at it and said, I told myself, well, I'll pay it next week. And I didn't think there was going to be any more issues. I went to the city hall, and the first thing, and I had got a notice in the mail stating on the, well, I had went to the city hall center on Barn Street, and the first thing on Monday, the 21st of May, I paid the bill due in full, and the two young ladies that waited on me, they're very friendly and most professional. And then on the 25th, that Friday, I happened to be out in the yard working, and the post lady came up and handed me my mail, and to my shocking, there was another postcard, and this time, it had them big roll letters, "Deliquent." And it embarrassed me, so I immediately got in the car and rode back up to the city hall on that Monday about noon time. And the young lady that waited on me when I paid it, she was kind of surprised, she said, well, maybe it just got crossed in the mail. Well, then she brings up the comment, now that my bill was late. And I mean, it wasn't just the fact that it's the money, it's just the principal was a $3.89 late fee. It was just kind of embarrassing. I just think that, and I asked the young lady when they mailed the bills out. She says, well, they generate the bills, maybe they get them the 4th and the 5th, and by the time they get in the mail, so it's would have given us about a week to pay the bill on due date. Now I know the look, that the due date is on the 18th, but that happened to be on the weekend, and I went that Monday to pay it first thing. And just like this month, here it is now, we're on the 5th, at least now I know that the bill is going to be due on the 18th, but when are we going to get these bills in a timely manner? I don't think a week's time is really appropriate to let somebody know when the water bill was due. And another thing with the thing about identity theft going on now, I don't really like the idea that our account number and the amount of our water and sewer bill is so visibly viewed, you know, it can be placed in the wrong mailbox, and anybody can see your account number, and I think what they need to do, if they want to keep it on the postcard like it is, then maybe they need to have it where it folds over and it has a seal where you can break it open, but I just don't think it's really proper for anybody to know your business, especially what your water and sewer bill is, and then too, they've got access, right and paying view of your darn account number. And that's just, I just don't think it's just proper.
Okay, thanks for bringing that to our attention. I certainly appreciate that. Okay, the first item under items of consideration is consideration of the employment agreement with Hank Raper. Does the Cherokee motion, we dissolve the contract employment we have with Mr. Raper?
So made.
It's been moved and seconded, we dissolve the contract. Is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor indicates that we're saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Accordingly, it is done, you will notify him through the [inaudible]. Okay, the second item is consideration of his only request, 2018-03, a request for an amendment to the approved site plan for Walmart located at 1205 Eastern Avenue. This was the presentation's gifts the other night, which is a change of the color on the front, and our planning board has voted unanimously to make a favorable recommendation on their request. Does the Cherokee motion, we approve the consideration?
So made.
Second.
Made and seconded, we approve the consideration. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor indicates that we're saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. The next item on our agenda is a discussion of our public comment policy. There was a reference earlier about the policy of having to sign up for 10 days, has some limitations to it, which it certainly does. That policy came together almost under duress back many years ago, when there were numerous people coming in in large numbers demanding mega decisions on the spot, and the former mayor wanted to give some thinking time into these things, which was, that's how that thing came about. We have a new plan here, which I'll be happy to read to you, of which there are 12 parts to it. The town of Nashville Town Council is committed to allowing members of the public an opportunity to offer comments and suggestions for the efficient and effective administration of government. In addition to public hearings, a public comment period is set aside for the purpose of receiving such comments and suggestions. All comments and suggestions addressed by the town council during the public comment period shall be subject to the following procedures. Number one, the public comment period shall be held at the beginning of the town council's regular meetings. The comment period will be limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. At the discretion of the council, this may be extended as circumstances warrant. Number two, persons who wish to address the council during the public comment period will register on a sign-up sheet located on the clerk's desk at the front of the council chambers. Speakers will provide contact information and the topic of their comments on the sign-up sheet. Sign-up sheets will be available 20 minutes before the start of the meeting. No one will be allowed to have their name placed on the list by telephone or email request to town staff. Number three, if a person arrives after public comment has begun to desire to address the board, they may do so after those who have signed up have addressed the council, assuming time is available. Each speaker will have three minutes to make their remarks. Speakers may not yield time to another person. And number five, it is recommended that groups or delegations select their spokesman in advance of the meeting. Number six, speakers will be acknowledged by the mayor in order which their names appear on the sign-up sheet. Speakers will address the board from the podium at the front of the room, and will begin their remarks by stating their name and address. Number seven, public comment is not intended to require the council to answer impromptu questions. Speakers will address all comments to the council as a whole and not to one individual council member. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Discussions between speakers and members of the board will not be allowed. However, the council reserves the right to ask questions of the speaker for clarification. Number eight, speakers shall be courteous in their language and presentation, and must be respectful in their remarks, refraining from personal attacks and the use of profanity. Number nine, one speaker will be acknowledged at a time. If the time period runs out before those signed up have spoken, those names will be carried over the next public comment period at the next regular meeting. At the discretion of the council, a public comment time period may be extended as circumstances warrant. Number 10, speakers who have prepared written remarks or supporting documents are encouraged to leave a copy of such remarks and documents with the town clerk. Speakers from the floor may address agenda and non-agenda items, provided that the item is not already on the agenda for public hearing. Any comments on matters of public hearing shall be made at the public hearing. Number 12, by law, individual personnel issues are confidential, and neither town-elected officials nor town employees may discuss such matters in open session. Citizens should not discuss any of the matters which concern the candidacy of any person seeking public office, including the person addressing the council, matters in current or anticipated litigation, matters which are closed, session matters, including but not limited to matters within the attorney-client privilege, personnel, property acquisition, or other matters which are made confidential by law. Number 13, information sheets outlining the process for the public's participation in council meetings will be available at the clerk's desk in the town council chambers. Number 14, action responses or comments on items raised during the public comment period will be at the discretion of the council. So, these are the things that are recommended in our policy. I would suggest that we take this thing and put it on the public board for comments and decide what to do with our next meeting.
That's a great idea.
Okay? All right. Thank you for listening, everybody.
So, in effect, we've gone from two weeks to 20 minutes?
Sign up.
The day off.
Yeah, sign up. Okay. Okay, the next item was consideration of some budget amendments. Some have been added into the agenda since you got your package. The first one, budget amendment number 38, is an addition in revenue to the Police Department for our Hope Initiative. Does the Cherokee motion, we approve this by $124?
So made.
It's been moved and seconded, we approve, I hear, second? It's been moved and seconded, we approve the budget amendment. Is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor indicates that we're saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Okay. Amendment number 48 and 49 was just handed to me this afternoon. 48 deals with some issues in the Recreation Department where they need to move some money about to repair their football helmets to the tune of $1,434, which is an internal movement, which the manager would have, could have approved had he been here, but that's not the case. Does the Cherokee motion, we approve this moving of money so they get their helmets fixed?
So made.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? There being none, indicates that we're saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Okay, item number 49 is a last-minute thing coming on, dealing with the library for the purchase of computers from an LSTA grant. The amount of money needed is $58.58, which is not in their budget, so they are asking for an appropriation for our fund balance surplus for that amount. However, once this item is closed, all that money will be refunded back to us, so it's a sort of washout. We have to pay up front to get the money.
I'm sorry, a bit more than that. That's for the computers, we also have
We also have to pay for the licenses and...
Wait, wait just a minute, I can't hear. Emily, yeah, come up, come up here and tell us what you're saying. I can't, behind that post, I can't hear anything.
Sorry, it's, that's for the, just for the computers, for the licenses and for installation of the computers, which Braswell Memorial would take care of. It's an additional one thousand forty-one. So the total would be sixty-eight ninety-eight ninety-five.
Sixty-eight, how much?
Sixty-eight ninety-eight ninety-five.
Ninety-eight, okay.
But all of it is still reimbursed, right?
Every bit of it, yes.
So it's all, all coming back?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. I'm sorry I didn't have the right number. Okay, with that revised figures, the Cherokee motion, we approve the issue?
Same as.
It's been moved and seconded, we approve this budget amendment. Is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate yourself as saying yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no. Okay, under item five, there are a number of amendments running from thirty-nine to forty-seven, which are internal things approved by our manager, which is in his realm because he was moving money around inside of council. That's an information item. So we move forward from there to council comments. Who would like to start tonight? Mr. Taylor, Will Young?
Will Young, okay. As I came in, well, let me back up. This is the first time that I can recall since I've been on the council that we've had standing room only in this council chamber. Everybody's in here for one reason or another, but I hope some of the information...
I hear you.
Can't hear me? Biggest mouth, I think. Okay, this is the first time since I've been on the council, going on eleven years, that I have seen this council chamber standing room only. But I hope by you being here and some of the information that we've already shared with you tonight shows that when you show up and speak your mind and tell us what's going on in town and give us your concerns, that we do listen. We still not finished. Some of the things I've heard tonight is a little bit disturbing to me also, which I was not, and I'm quite sure a lot of us up here was not aware of, but that too, I mean, some things you can, you can fix, some things you can't, but we are trying. As I came in the door this evening, one of the ladies, one of our citizens says, "I know you're tired of seeing me come in this, come in this building." And my response to her was, "No, I'm not. I want to see you at every meeting." And I offer that same invitation to everybody that's in here now. We've had a little storm here in Nashville, but we're going to weather this storm, and the sun's going to come back out again. But when the sun comes out, don't you stay at home. I want you to keep coming, keep voicing your opinion, keep ringing my phone off the hook if you need to. But we do, we do listen. We may not be able to give you the answer that you want to have at that particular time, or in the end, we may not give you the answer, but I promise you, we do listen, and we are here to work, work for you. So again, I appreciate everybody being here. I appreciate your concern for the town, just like I have for this town, and once again, thank you, and next month, I want to see some of these same faces. Standing room only is not a problem. We can find some more chairs if we have to. So again, thank you for showing up.
Mr. Taylor?
As Larry Taylor said, it's unusual to see this many people in the council chambers. It's good because it makes us realize that as citizens, you are listening and you are looking. And no, we're not perfect, but we're working, trying to get that way, and we are working diligently right now to try to get the train back on the track. So if you will please bear with us, try to refrain from, from being too harsh on social media with us, because not only do you see it, citizens from other places see it also, and businesses see it, and they may decide that Nashville's not the place they want to be, and that's not what any of us want or need. I'm not saying don't bring it to our attention, but please be careful with it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Sidney?
We're going through a transition, and one thing that's very important, we have departments and department heads who are strong and will get us through this. Tina Price is carrying on in planning. We're fortunate that Lynn Hobbs is helping us out in finance, as well as Sandra Griffin, and my understanding is Yvette Hinton has been helping us also. So we are carrying on, but with the help of some very loyal citizens. And I cannot thank the workers in this town enough for carrying on. Thank you.
Okay.
My comments tonight are quite a bit of echoing other council comments tonight. First, I wanted to thank Lou for working so hard on the comments portion. I think that resolves a lot of the issues that have been brought up and that we've had in the past. But I especially want to thank our employees for graciously and loyally weathering this storm. I know it's been difficult, and really, we appreciate everything that you do. Also, I do think that we have the best citizens in this town, from the people who come out and voice their opinions, to those who have stepped up, offered their services in any way, shape, and form that they can, and so we wouldn't have been able to do this without them. And I just look forward to all of us working together in the future, and I do hope that everyone keeps showing up to meetings and keeps voicing their opinions. It's, it's very important, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I, can I back up?
Yeah, go ahead.
Something that was not said, as you heard, we, we, our former town manager is, is former, he's gone, but the other person that we have a lot of concern about, nobody's mentioned, Ms. Maudlin, they left together. So we don't have her either.
Through?
That was it.
That was it?
That was it.
Okay, all right. Short and sweet. I want to thank everybody for coming, of course. Democracy works by consensus, and the greater the participation, the greater the quality of decisions, according to the theorists, and we want you to keep coming. I'm sorry we've had this bump up in time, seems like everything happened at one time, and I want to thank everybody who's helped us, helped us get along. I really appreciate the people who've come forward to help us, because, because last week at this time, we were looking at the possibility of complete municipal collapse, but, because our finance situation was getting ready to close, but, but Lynn, Lynn's helped us out, Sandra's helped us out, Yvette's helped us out. I stood around praying, and of course, I guess they were more effective than me, but, but anyway, it, it's all, it's all coming back together. Hank is now gone, his, his contract is now officially terminated. The reason it couldn't be done earlier because it required legislative action. According to the council, manager plan of government, the council hires the manager by legislative decision, which we have done, thus we create the contract, and it can only be dissolved by legislative contract, so we can't, you know, just chop him off like a field hand. So that was some of the delay with this. The issue with Mrs. Maudlin, of course, she's an administrative-type person, and under our form of government, the manager hires all administrative persons, we, and fires, and we had some difficulties in getting our manager to come around to that point. Mrs. Maudlin, at this point in time, is on administrative leave. We hope to have that issue resolved tomorrow, and then, as Mr. Taylor said, she'll be removed from...
Employment.
Our community.
Yep.
Employment, good term. Thank you, thank you. So, so just work with us, please. It's getting better. It's getting better. Okay, we now need to have a closed session to follow up on some of the issues we just talked about concerning personnel. So, and, and I don't know how long we'll be, but if you want to stay, we'll be happy to, to have you, and we'll report out what we decide when we, when we come back. The Cherokee entertain a motion now to go into closed session to discuss personnel issues.
Same as.
By virtue of North Carolina General Statute 133-31811.
Thank you.
There's a move and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, there being none, all in favor, indicate, so we're saying yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no. Okay. Accordingly, we're in closed session, and we will meet over in the meeting room in a couple of minutes.
Please stay.
Please stay.
Please stay.
Hopefully not long.